You're all, yeah, lived a good life. Just.
So you can see her.
I was just.
So.
Can you go upstairs?
I can do it.
Oh, you can do it?
Yeah.
Do we have this number?
No.
Could you not? Anybody who's gonna hear you go send those six five one.
Of like.
I doubt he's in, he's probably in rouse, but.
You gotta wait your rounds.
Well, we need somewhere. But the one. She's just crazy. Strange. He was like, what about this? I need you to come on the line and talk. I say, what's the place wrong here? There's something wrong, I know it. Does she have special needs or she? She's, she's very unique, but I think she's a little bit.
I can't say that word.
Either side, like that, just hang on with her and she puts her hands on your shoulder.
He's been sitting upstairs waiting for us.
Oh, Ted.
We hear talking.
Take watch.
He's like, well, I'm up here.
Open my glass and look.
The board.
We will wait until he gets your.
I mostly carry right hallway. Community.
Let's see. If it's recording. Oh, it does say recording at the top under the red.
That this was just. And it's streamlined, so. We will restring it. Oh, true. They can ask. The number. So those are. Yeah. Hi.
Hi. And I had to circle three times.
See tears, Ted. My son was upstairs.
Thank you.
People get so confused.
Hello.
Yeah, we've looked at.
I've been upstairs relaxing. And holding myself.
Where's everybody else?
You know, it's still a little bit early.
So, uh, so like.
Is this your home?
Right, we don't really call it. Away from doing our special.
I spend more.
Okay, so I call this probably.
Especially.
Probably budget presentation meeting to order. We do have a forum?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have a forum.
Okay, very good, and so what we will do that Kerry, I believe Kerry is gonna do the public, the budget presentation, and then when we finish that back, we'll start with our normal. Of pledgeable agents and prayer and all of such things. And Kerry. Want to present the budget? If I, is that a big, I'd be like. You guys have a problem with.
Uh, no, not of the.
We could share.
Yeah.
Okay, I have just a couple.
Yeah, I don't want one.
Sorry.
So the purpose of this budget hearing, um, it's required by statute, and what we as a board have to do is present in a public forum and allow for public input on a proposed budget. This is a proposed draft budget, and that's all that we're approving today is to move that proposed draft budget through. Um, we all know, as we've discussed for the past year, that we don't have accurate financials at this time. So what German and company did with this budget is they took, um, old. Our historic budget data, um, from back when we had the actual data, and they built in escalators. So they didn't change much of the budget, all they did was build in like a five percent for. So that is pretty much what we're looking at now is an old budget with a five percent escalator in most cases. There are few adjustments here and there for grants that we no longer receive and stuff like that, but, um, that's basically what this is. This board knows that this budget is a work in progress and that we are working diligently on getting a working financial system in place. And once that happens, our budgets will become more real. So what we have been doing as a finance committee is we have been meeting with all of the different departments and sharing with them this proposed budget and what their budget was before. Um, and the overwhelming input that we've gotten from most departments is that they're happy to have numbers. A lot of them who are newer didn't know that they had actual budgets because they haven't seen them in a year. Um, but they were overall excited about the possibility that we'll actually be able to use these budgets in the future. And that we'll have an active process of, um, reviewing their departments through budgeting. So, um, that is what this is, like I said, as per state statutes, we have to have a public hearing. This proposed draft budget then goes to the state and it's publicized as all special districts are. Um, and we will move on from there and with the full knowledge that during the coming year, you know, this budget is gonna change. And once we get active, um, financials and our accounting system working properly, then we'll be able to make a much more useful product. Anyone on the finance committee have anything that they want to add? Anyone on the board have anything that they want to add?
Regarding the budget. Just regarding the budget.
Um, so one of the other things that we did as, um, during the budget workshops is we talked to all the departments about their capital needs. So I do have a kind of a summary of everything all the departments have told us that our actual needs and wish lists and anything that any department shared with us about capital items. Um, I kind of summarized in the sheet here for the everyone on the board to be aware of. So, um, again, as we move through this process, as we get more clear with our actual numbers, we'll be able to determine what we're able to fund for the coming year. But, um, in terms of capital items, I wanted to start with our successes. I know we've had a lot of problems and that the lack of financials has overshadowed a lot. Um, but I thought it would be great to highlight what we've accomplished this year, and we do have some really good successes. We were able to fund the oxygen program through a grant. Um, Randy just let us know the other day that the current quote for the oxygen program came in below the grant amount. So we are able, we are going to be able to start with that project very soon. I asked Ron yesterday if he was gonna be ready for that project, and he said he is. So he's, that, that will be commencing. Um, Kisha.
Hi, here you.
Yes, she is. The, um, Kisha's project, the x-ray room is well underway. Um, she's had the demo phase and getting ready to bring the new machine in, so that is another big success. The long-term care pharmacy medication packager that we talked about in the last meeting is underway. Um, we'll be talking about it on our regular agenda, but, um, that is all ready to go and ordered and. Set to come in in a couple of months. Um, IT, Wendy, numerous upgrades already commencing and numerous ones planned for next year. Working real hard on upgrading our cybersecurity and our hardware and software and switches and routers and everything else. So we made a lot of progress in the IT realm, which, you know, IT is hugely important to all of us. Um, and then the urine analyzer for the lab, which is on the agenda for today too. We're gonna approve that and move forward with it. So we've had some really good successes this year. Um, and we have a bunch of. Requests and needs and, um, things that we will be able to work on for the coming year, so. Uh, I. In light of everything that we've done, I, I just thought it was really important that we highlight the positive and where we've come. So congratulations and kudos to all of you for all your hard work on all these projects.
Is there anything else we need to go over as far as the budget? I know, I, I think if I remember right, we went through it almost line by line, but do we need to do that with it not just being a.
No. Maybe take right now if someone choose anywhere except the budget, but I think a little bit of discussion.
Okay. Any discussion?
So we want to set that budget.
The, um, this is the proposed budget, so we would need a motion to move the proposed budget and then we discuss it. Correct, Ted?
That would be the proper way.
If anybody wants to move the proposed budget, then we can start talking about it. So Madam Chair, I make the motion that we move the proposed budget. Any seconds or eight seconds?
All second.
All in favor? Or wait, no, no, we have discussion, sorry. So any discussion?
President Kerry, we listened to all of the five percent increase across the board. Uh, was already included in there, some additional items for adding to that. It looks like at the standard right now, you're gonna have a loss, uh, additional modifications, you're not made with about 1.2 million, but that includes contractual allowance, bad debt, write offs, everything else. But they're true for improvement in there from revenue side of standpoint, but also from safety standpoint. So I would recommend that for the deep managers and leadership team on, you know, on a revenue cycle, uh, with the providers coming on, you want to be pretty new service lines as they come up. And then also work with each department manager, okay? Where, where can we save? But we're working with the mayor, purchasing partnership to get the best savings that we can and utilize them and start, uh, make sure we get the savings. But Kisha. I think she saved about $250,000 in extra. GPO, so.
And I, I think along those lines, I mean, yeah, 1.2. That's awful.
Well, actually 1.6, so.
Right, so.
Getting better.
Right.
But, you know, you got to figure in your write offs, your charity care, that some people don't understand. All of that plays in the court and also be taken, that goes into consideration, explanation on the true law, if it does apply to all.
And, and just, I, I mean, I think there's, oh, I mean, it's not, I think we just all need to work together, so it's too expensive to figure out ways to make revenue. And I, I, I think we can, I think we can get going in the right direction. I think there are areas definitely where it sounds like that we can improve revenue for sure, and I'm sure there's. And there's gotta be ways that we can, that expenses, we just need to be aware, and so.
I agree. All right, the only thing I got to say, I appreciate that the department heads participating. I think they need to have an active hand in the budget process. You know, starting with a budget that's, starting with funds that are vest asset right now, and everybody realizes that. It just, uh, if we continue on involving people in the budget process, asking questions, uh, everybody, and take time. Trouble is, the budget process happens once a year. It's not something that the department hits, they'll work with it all year long, but, uh, it'll, you know, if it happened every week, it would have a lot better understanding. You know, so it's gonna take time, you know, a few years before everybody kind of understands what the budget process is. And I, I think this, uh. Good first step, a great first step, I can't say how hard this first step is. It's good. For the board and staff and the people.
So Randy, do we need to vote to approve this proposed budget? Is that how we do it, or do we go on?
You got modified to be made as. That way you can get submitted to stay on.
We don't want to miss the deadline.
What is the deadline?
Oh, I.
Okay, yeah, there's a big sheet of all the deadlines, it's got.
So are, are we ready to vote or is this a more discussion?
I have a question. So who do we have to submit?
Stay on.
Big rate.
Who's at this?
Do we also have this, uh, today sent?
And is it something we have to.
I don't know. Jill accepted all the.
Only electronically, there's a specific, yeah, if you go on the Department of Audit website, there's a specific spreadsheet. We're gonna ask you about, you have to go out with a free list and then you wouldn't have to ask the ones other than.
Actually, by the time we submitted it both. Just we, we go ahead and throw it in the envelope and certify it or and mail it so that they're returning. They did receive what it is.
So who actually submitted?
Denise does, okay. She might need some help because the new.
I've done it before, but I will.
Oh, okay, okay, I thought you did.
Like your pants. I just. I wanted to drink. A little. And now it's a $45,000 budget.
Do we also need to file this?
Okay.
Yeah. Well, they'll look at it.
They're on.
The commissioners have the authority to not approve them. If you had a budget, but they had $100 million in your bank somewhere. Or a smaller district, $45,000, if you had $500,000 in your bank, they may decrease your bills. For half a year. Unless you can explain what you're using the money for. If the water district lower equipment, uh, new main lines throughout the whole system, that can, it's going to be X amount of dollars, $450,000. Then they, they should worry it like you have.
So, Ken, did you say?
County clerk. Yeah.
Do you have any other discussion? New comments?
How thoroughly in finance?
That's the word.
So when, in finance, we set up budget workshops with each of the departments, and then we met with virtually all of them. And we just pulled out their page of the budget and went over it with them. Right, and used it as a way to understand their department and how many people they have on that average shift and, you know, what goes on in their department with the different line items or for. You know, what each department was responsible for, and I think it was really, for me, it was great to get to know all of the departments. And there was a lot of them who, you know, there was other things that they did besides their primary function, and I learned a lot. And I thought it was a wonderful exercise for me to get to know everyone, and I think it was very good for all the department heads to take. A lot of them had never seen their actual numbers, so we just had good conversations about what goes into the budgeting process. And, yeah, it was, I thought they were great discussions to feel free any other finance committee member to add.
Yes, I, I agree, and it really helped me understand how the hospital works, a much more detailed level and how the departments at some points interact.
Nathan took, I have a lot of handwritten notes, but Nathan has a lot of typed out notes, so he was gonna send his typed notes to me, and I will add in my handwritten notes, and we'll try to get a summary out to all of you. So you can, you know, have participation in those discussions as well, so it was great information.
I, I took the effort to make a lot of screenshots and include them in the documents, so you can see the source documents for yourself and have a basis of reference visually for what it is that we're discussing. Because sometimes it's hard to imagine. Yeah, what exactly is being discussed.
Right.
I hope that we. You spoke to all, okay, because everyone who's.
Cause going down through it line by line, it was difficult, especially with a lot of the department heads that had never seen their budget. And so, uh, they were working somewhat in the dark, and of course, we were looking at it somewhat in the dark, so, uh, we did take them, you know, we talked to every department head, and it was a learning experience for me and hopefully them too.
Okay. So, good. I just wanted your guys' input for anything that you guys thought.
Definitely worth the time.
I thought. Do you guys, do you guys want, did you guys all get comments of the draft budget?
Oh, I saw.
I'll tell you guys it later.
A little nighttime review.
We've got plenty.
Got to read more too.
Any, any other questions?
Any motion?
So I, I do, if I understand, Ray, we need to send this in, but we can continue to change it and get it more. From what I can gather, it's not as accurate as it should be or could be, but we can keep working on it and.
About the year, have you submitted? It's, okay, so it's divided. All right. So we just have to submit the preliminary.
Yeah.
And is there a deadline? Is when we have to immediately stop picking up the.
You're so. It worked, you know, in my mind, it should be worked on all year. As departments change possibly with personnel, uh, or staffing, uh, they're probably a major cost in a lot of departments is staffing. Maybe there will be an increase, maybe there will be, uh, possibly a decrease in some department, I don't know, uh, but it is, it's. The more notes you make on this during the year, the better off your RCE to the budget year next year. I do.
And so, so. If we do make changes to budget, I assume that comes back to your, we vote on it? I'm settled.
Well, we accept the budget once a year. This is our public budget hearing, and that's required by law, as you said. This is required by law, and I don't know if there's ever such a thing in the final, it's like, it's everybody, but you can't foresee the future.
Right.
Okay. We're, all right, good enough.
Maybe we can use the guidelines for our CDO too, and when they wanted to be drawn, we can ask them that they come to us and so that we're aware.
If we see a line item that is. We see a line item that is red halfway through a year, that should be a flag to us that we either didn't put money in it or maybe that line item is, is, should be divided. Maybe to another department's or, uh. Generally, not the department.
To change money in their line items, how the county works, change money in their line items, but their overall budget, they shouldn't last days.
So like, for instance, if we had budgeted for ten nurses. And, and the, this need, being eleven nurses in long-term care, then that would be the thing they would come and, you know, TVA.
So do you need an approval, I mean, for this right now?
We're discussion, I guess. Well, I'm in, the chairman of all capable.
Yep, so are we ready? I'm kind of worried about the noise on me too.
Now, check where it's a view way over there.
You got him, I think.
Well, that's us. Yeah, but if you click on that.
I think you got him.
Yeah.
You can.
There it is, you all around the right. Open down the right. You all underneath all the.
Sorry, I have a hard time seeing that far away.
Explain that you should be the chair.
Okay, yes, your question, yes, please.
Will we ever have a meeting in the future where Steve will not be here?
I miss too, so.
When will we do that with our engagement?
It's, he's gonna be on that.
Anybody can.
They got that.
CEO search. So, and we really listen to you. And so, uh. I think that's part of the student, Dylan. I think we're not so. But. So, three, can we vote, are we ready to vote on the? So, all those in favor of accepting this proposed budget? I, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same time?
May I ask a question? Was it a month ago?
It was the day.
Okay, so. Can I say something, is that okay or do I have to wait till comments? I just, Ted was saying that with the managers and directors, never were part of the budget. We were with the last CEO, we did a budget and every department had to come in. And we went line for line for line and had to tell her why we increased, why we decreased, what we expected, how we were gonna increase our revenue and everything else. So, we were always involved in it, so.
Good, good.
Just so you know.
Yeah, I didn't knock that, so I.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's end this portion of the meeting. Don't fight high enough.
I move that we.
Adjourn the budget presentation.
Adjourn the budget presentation. Do I have a second?
I second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we will call our regular D to order. Nick, do we still have a quorum?
Still have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Kareem, will you lead us in the, in the pledge and then I'll go ahead and ask God this question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just ask for your blessing in this meeting. I pray that you would help us to be clear and make the decisions. It's good name, great. Okay, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Um, I have it. One change, Madam Chair, if I may. Under. Seven, new business, can we have an item F approval of I T purchase of router for epic slash monument direct data connection? That's how covered.
That covers all. Say that again.
Twelve new business. It would be right here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Twelve. Yes.
Twelve that?
Twelve that. That twelve that was. So, approval of the I, of the.
Approval of I T purchase of router for epic monument direct data connection.
Anything else that we need to add to the agenda or take away? Somebody else? So, all those in favor of changing that, adding that F, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same? Um, okay, so. I, I think I just said it. So, maybe we should.
I mean, is it about the budget?
No, no. About accepting the change to the agenda.
It's on agenda.
Yeah.
Very opposed.
Okay, so let's walk that back. Does anybody seem to, I would accept a motion to accept the changes to the agenda? I'll make the motion to accept the change to the agenda.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor of changing, adding that F, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same? Okay. Okay, so. Has, can somebody move to accept those minutes? Everybody, so. If we have to, that I have my, I believe they're on. Are they on the stretch? Not where, I haven't seen. I know, when I looked at them on the computer, I thought they were fine. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
All those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same? Nick. Okay, so now it is time for visitor comments. So. So, it'd be nice if, like, she looks like the will, but let's keep it not too long. We want to hear from that.
Well, since you're looking at the end, I'm just gonna say one thing. You all know how the community feels, so I think we just ended it at that point. Together.
I hope so.
Well, what?
In general, about our CEO, what we're gonna do in the future, how everybody can work together. I think we all elected a board that will work together, make decisions together, and I think that's the best thing for us.
Oh, I mean, putting you on the spot, just.
Go right ahead.
In my experience joining the board, is it's hard. Always they affected, everybody's fault. And so, I find it extremely helpful and valuable.
What, sorry?
I find it extremely helpful and valuable for people to continue speaking to me. And I hope everybody on the board feels that way too. Because on a board, you have to listen to lots of different voices who all have different agendas and perspectives. And if the community's voice is not continually coming our way, it's easy to lose perspective.
The new store, this is the one stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
Because on a board, you have to listen to lots of different voices who all have different agendas and perspectives. And if the community's voice is not continually coming our way, it's easy to lose perspective.
I think the one big thing for me, and you all know, as people forever in a day, we elected a board and the bylaws used to be that everybody in the board made a decision together. And then all of a sudden it changed to where the chair alone make, could make the decisions. And I wish we go back to what we voted in for, that everybody can make a decision together and then come to a solution. Yeah, that's my, it worked.
I, I really agree with that. And I, like, right now, I feel like.
That's another question.
Yeah, well, it is a lot of pressure. And I also feel like, you know, right now, it's like, I don't really want the board to get bogged down on bylaws. If I get, I wanna get this CEO search going and all of that before we get bogged down on bylaws. But I.
And the other thing is, we've been here a long time. If you have questions about things work before, ask us. Ask us what we've done before, we've done systems, hard work for German, sorry, session training, we've done leadership classes. We did all of that before, so it's all been done. It's not as if we didn't know what we were doing, so that's my.
Can I ask Carmen what was the most effective trainings that you guys did that you felt like actually was implemented and was very useful? Because I know in my profession, we can do trainings for days, but they don't always play out the way that we first saw them to play out. So, what kind of trainings or, I guess, learning opportunities that you guys, have you felt that really, actually felt resonated through the whole organization?
Honestly, I think when we all worked together on like Oasis, planning and all these things we did, that was the best story for everybody because then a manager would put another department, see what is your problem, what do you need? So, we didn't all just stay in our little community. We went, I spoke to the people in the nursing home, everybody spoke to somebody else. And then everybody would come together and say, well, this is what we're seeing, this is what should change. And what was it called for these?
I've been trying to.
But we've had so many speakers, you know, how many speakers we've had, how many, how much money we've put out for all these people to analyze what is going on and just if we don't fix it, I was like, that's on you.
It's on you. Okay, no, go ahead, go ahead, guys.
And I think we, the best team are always managers. Somebody you can go to who knows everything and, well, not everything, but some.
People willing to spread their wisdom, I guess.
And if the employees don't buy into it, I mean, you can bring in companies. Because the last company that we had, it was in the last seven years. It's like if the, if the managers don't block buy into it and say, yes, this is gonna work and we're gonna implement it, then it's just a lot of hot air going. If, if you don't get the people that, if you don't get the employees, the managers, but all the employees kind of to buy into it, then it doesn't matter how much money you spend and how good the programs are. If you don't get the people to say, yeah, we wanna make these changes, we see why this could work, we see why this could help.
You need the why.
Yeah, you need the why and, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I think everybody learns from everybody else's department, you know? I mean, being at Home Health, you know, I had no clue about the business office and what they did in the billing and, and, you know, working with Sandy, you know? And her, you know, and Joyce, and then kind of dumbing it down for me, you know, so that I knew, you know, what they were doing on their end so that I could say, oh, okay, I'm not gonna get mad at you anymore for not doing this because now I understand A, B, and C that need to be done before we get to X, Y, and Z. You know, and I think we can all learn from each other in every department. You know, it's not, oh, well, that's not my job, you know, that's the business office's job. Well, if there's something I can do that on my end that makes it easier for them, you know, I think working together is the best education that any of us as employees, you know, can get. You know, it's, that's my take on it.
Being a team.
Absolutely. You know, yeah.
It's hard to be a team.
Absolutely.
So, during employee orientation, new employee orientation, are managers coming in and talking to the new employees and discussing what each department does? And what they can go like?
I mean, I can answer that for me. You sure, like, I, I visit with new employees. But it's more of, for me, a overview of policies. So, what is expected of you if you're going to have email on your phone? What is expected of you if you're logged into your computer, but you're walking away from your desk, it's expected you're gonna lock your computer? So, it's more policy procedures that I expect in an I T safety perspective than it is kind of, you know, what I do overall. It's more policies of what I discuss.
So, do employees have a, have a reference list or whatever to say, if I have a problem with this, this is where I go?
I think that, sure, well, that's in the employee, that book you give to them, right? They have a list of all the managers and what departments they are, who they spoke with, yes, yes.
So, if they have a problem with.
We have designated mentors, like in Home Health, one A, then we'll be one nurse, a one A, and that's A N G.
Those people know we have that. They're available for.
So, just to.
And we still use it.
Also, I T deals, so we have like Kim, she does like compliance and HIPAA, and then Wendy. Then we have a few other managers, Denalda, she does infection control. And then we also do a meet and greet with all of them managers so the new employees can meet new faces versus just say, oh, this is Denalda's, we should be able to see their face. And then, yeah, so we have a mentor program as well that they get stuck with a mentor. And then that mentor helps them figure out the facility.
Okay, that's kind of what I want to know. That's just so great. You're not trying to wrong, are you?
No, no, no.
Safety plan.
No.
Do you have any other visitor comments or any other questions for the visitors?
I know, that's good. I'm, I'm happy with that.
I have just an introduction. We have a visitor in our presence and I would love to take the time and I think Dr. Reimer can join in too because he's had an opportunity today. But there are several of us who have gotten to spend some time and we really wanted to share this person. Dr. Sherry Blanchard is here and she has a rich background. She's coming from Colorado currently, but she's been having discussion with us. And she's got a wide Wyoming heart and passion and a real appreciation for this place, which has been fantastic to be able to talk about. So, Sherry, would you please just share any background that you would like to with the team?
Sure. I trained at Texas A and M in College Station. And I worked through my residency, as we all frequently do, moonlighting in Texas. And a couple of years after that, then I moved to Wyoming. Spent almost twenty years in Wyoming, working between Douglas and Gillette and then back to Douglas. I left Wyoming about four years ago when COVID began. I felt like our family needed to be more of a unit and closer together and we're all in Colorado. So, I came to Colorado for the past four years and all the time, I've missed Wyoming. Been very difficult being away. I consider Wyoming my home, even though I grew up. Very excited, actually. All of these folks have been just wonderful, talking to me and giving me their insight and showing me things. Driving me to up and all around town. It's been a wonderful day, so thank you very much, Bill, I'm gonna do that. Dr. Reimer.
Yeah, we, we enjoy visiting, I think she has a lot of medical meetings we have. Try to sell her on how we're adjacent to Black Hills. Recreation for her kids and grandkids. Can I, can I ask a question? So, Dr. Reimer encouraged us to look for different providers that had sort of different focus areas that, so we can provide those things to our community. Could you comment on sort of the areas of medicine and those sorts of things that you?
Most certainly. I have an urgent care background as well as primary care. I've been a medical director for most of my career in Wyoming, over quite large clinic or a large clinic in Gillette and then also in Douglas. All of that as well. I really enjoy taking care of children, but also caring for all ages. I have a psychiatric background. I did a year of psychiatry in my residency before my family medicine residency when I was here previously. I don't know if any of you all remember Dr. Zolchak. I'm not sure if he's still practicing, but he worked closely with my clinic in Douglas to help manage psychiatric patients. He was taking care of to make things easier for them so they could go through me to get their medicines if necessary. And I could always get ahold of him and, you know, talk to him about what I thought we should do and shouldn't do. Hopefully, there'll be someone like that in Wyoming as well, because I know there's psychiatric shortage just about everywhere. I really love those things. I'm a very good team player. I'm calm. I feel like I have a really broad knowledge of medicine. I've seen a lot of things, I've done a lot of different things. I feel like I have a really broad knowledge of medicine. I've seen a lot of things. I've done a lot of different things. While I was in Douglas and Gillette, I was county health officer for 10, 11 years. I worked for a medicine hospice for 10, 11 years. So I, and you know, I remotely did hospital work. I don't really have any interest in that. I did some neonatal type things for units and deliveries for newborns until they could get ready. That's been too long to get my hands on again, but I certainly take care of children and love it very much. I'm dedicated to medicine. This has been my life and I love it very much. Can't imagine living my life without it. My family's very well aware of that and they support me 100%. And I live for my grandkids. I live for my grandkids, my kids and my dogs. I guess my dogs say we're locked out there. So that's kind of me in that show.
Thank you for introducing yourself to us.
Thank you all for having me.
Can I say one more thing? This is my mind. I got a textbook fan here and she has a question. So, okay, so for the CEO Kathy, I have concerns. I do not know her personally, but I do know that she has worked at a hospital.
This, this is probably not an appropriate conversation for public session.
Alrighty.
Thank you. I was just reading it off.
Allison, I have a question. Since I'm a new report member, could you enlightbe a little bit on why that wasn't appropriate?
Sure. The reason that you usually have discussions about a candidate's ability to perform a job, their qualifications, any difficulties they've had in the past in executive session is so that this hospital is not responsible for derogatory comments about them that affects their employment ability, being out in the public and looking like you're endorsing them, whether it's true or not, whether it's been vetted or not.
But we can't let people just state their opinions? Are we responsible for people stating their opinions? Because I thought this was a government sort of entity hospital.
If you would like to take those comments in public session, you're welcome to do so. I would advise against it as a risk to your organization, but ultimately it's up to your board.
My, my question specifically is, are we liable, since we're a government hospital, can we really infringe upon people's First Amendment rights? Is that something we should be doing?
You, you certainly can be sued for affecting someone's ability to pursue their career. And so if you choose to do that in public session and it hurts someone's career, you could be potentially sued and also potentially held liable as being irresponsible and doing that in public session. That's why executive session allows you to have those discussions that are not in the public view.
Okay.
If they're still in public session, I just wondered, can people be allowed to ask a question and the board respond if they can't comment? I think so.
Did you hear that, Allison?
I'm sorry. It's difficult for me to hear when you guys are in that room, so.
I just asked, the question is, should people be interrupted and not allowed to simply ask their question? And the board respond by saying, we can't comment because that's a personnel issue?
So your, your policy of what you're allowed to discuss in public session, most public boards do not allow for comments about employment, employment matters, or potential employees in public comment.
But the thing is, is we can do letters to the editor about our organization. That can happen in the public realm as well. So maybe some of these things should be vetted before, beforehand.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I will tell you it's unusual for the attorney for a hospital to have dialogue with the public in public comment. Though I hear what you're saying, the purpose of the board meetings is to conduct the business of the board. It's, I'm accustomed to seeing board members being reached out to personally to have discussions that aren't appropriate to have in public session or to have them addressed in executive session.
That's next question, which is being in executive session.
Probably that, but she can't talk if she wants to give, give any of us on the board.
I think she can, she just.
Oh, sorry. So yeah, if you have things that you want to tell any of us on the board, feel free to send the same text that you sent to, to Allison, but we're not, we're not going to have visitors in executive session. So with that, if there are no more comments, I would, I will close public comments. So. I think this. So let's move on. The next thing on our agenda is approving the loan for the medication package through First Northern Bank.
And can I ask a quick question about the minutes?
Yes.
I'm not ever reading the minutes. I'll just disclose that. Should someone on the board be reading the minutes?
So.
Are you doing that?
Yeah.
Okay, through. Okay.
She'll send you what she's got and I'll kind of go back.
And you will read through them?
I'm writing them down right now. Just to see if they're going to add any adjustments as I get better at this.
And so you're making a judgment about if you think that was a.
Yeah.
An accurate summary of.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I lined mine up. Yeah, that's what.
Okay, thank you.
So. So. Do you want to share?
I just wanted to make sure somebody was looking at them.
Right. And, and I also read them. I know they're there. I will also.
As every, every board member should.
That's right.
Yeah, a case of correction on a motion or a second or something like that, a little inaccurate.
This happens.
For the public and for next board members that come along.
Right.
Okay, so let's, so that, that number D should be down there under CEO. Only in here.
Oh, it's only mine. Okay.
It's only on mine.
We have the D, yes.
Oh, I, I don't.
Do you have the D under consent agenda?
So I. I printed off the one that he emailed when she said, I'm going to make sure this is correct. So I think this is the updated one.
So the letter D that was under the consent agenda of group loan for medication package, that should go under CEO report, not under consent. It was, it was not my intention to go pervert under the consent agenda.
Okay, so let's go to our CEO report.
Thank you, Randy.
All right. The motion to Dr. Haverly's contract.
So we have, so why doesn't somebody make that motion and then we can have discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve Dr. Haverly's contract. Okay, I will second submit to discuss. Okay, any discussion?
So is, are we also going to discuss this in executive session or is it?
We should be able to discuss Dr. Haverly's contract in executive session also, right, Allison?
Yes, you can.
I. I think it would be appropriate to have a discussion, executive discussion. Before approving it?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
I, I.
There's some question.
Yeah, I have, yes, I have a couple of questions. Yes, I think.
It's probably information that you would want confidential.
Okay, okay. So, so that, if that's the case, and I think we should, when I call for vote, we should vote no. And then we will bring it up again in executive session. Is that a proper way to do it, Allison?
Just table it in.
So it was my, it was my understanding that the discussion point under CEO report was for Randy to present information on the contract or any additional information. And then it's also listed under new business as approval of provider contract. So that was an informational report from Randy under CEO report. So he has nothing to report, you can just move on.
Randy, I think most of us.
Yeah.
I do have a question. Is, is a three-year contract standard practice? Someone told me two years is more standard. What are your thoughts on?
We have four years, we got three years, we got five.
And where did the contract, body of the contract come? Did we get it all?
No, Allison did all the contracts.
So Allison is, my question was, where did the body of the contract language originate?
Well, excuse, so that's a contract form that has been used within your organization and I added some detail to it, but it's basically a standard physician contract. As far as the specific terms as to term and pay, those are specific to your organization.
So Allison, would now be an appropriate time for me to ask a question about the contract that you.
Let's wait, let's wait. She'll be in executive session. Let's wait, we'll do that later. Okay, so Allison, I've got myself into a fix. We are in, we have a motion on the floor. We'll discuss it in executive session.
Was it seconded?
Yes.
Have the second withdrawn and then it'll die for a lack of a second. We'll get back to it.
Thank you, Craig. Okay, we will forget that until we get to executive session. I'm sorry. Okay. Randy, can you go to lab analyze?
Yeah, the lab analyzer.
Is this the urine analyzer? And is that the document for Fisher that we have in front of us? So the Fisher helped here. I, I make a motion that we approve the funding.
Are we supposed to approve that or is this just him reporting to us at this point?
It's over $10,000.
It's going to be over 10% for the board approval.
So. Okay, so you made it. Somebody else want to second it?
I seconded.
I seconded. So Nathan, move, move, two seconds. All right, Mary, Ted. Okay, thank you.
Is there, is there any discussion on whether or not we need to get this lab, lab analyzed where we want?
So this is a urine analyzer and during the course of budget workshops with the lab, it was, this has been brought before to board before, but it somehow got lost in the, in the CEO board changeover. So I asked that it be brought forward again because it, it wasn't approved. I mean, it was, as far as my recollection, approved before and he was supposed to be able to purchase it. But since it got lost in the shuffle, I just asked him if we could just bring it forward again so we can make sure it gets purchased this time. So this is a piece of critical equipment for the lab. It's seconded, according to Jim, in the lab. It's seconded only in importance to the giant chemical analyzer. So.
This is 21.
Equipment.
Yes, okay. So this, this was the smaller.
The little one on the desk.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same?
The next item is the multi-person hygiene chair as well as a period. Currently have the orders touching out of safety risk and hazards to the patients. So the new one is $6,800.
I, I have a question. Three options. So I understand your spending limit is either $10,000. Is there a reason? They have. Not approving these. Are you just forming us so no? So do we, do we need to make the motion to approve it or are you just telling us that we'll be?
$5,000 if I did bring it to the board.
Right, right.
Why did you do that much?
Right, right. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
And there are CEOs to do that.
Appreciate knowing about it. So thank you.
Because it was on our list and how we know that you brought that before in our budget meetings or financial meetings.
The next approval, we just need, we already, the board has already approved the purchase of the hygiene system for the pharmacy. This is approval from First Northern Bank that I received. That it needs to be approved by the board to be able to purchase the. I have the unit here that I can sign once the one that is that I can get these signed and then we can go ahead and forward with purchase of.
So is this the best? I think you all checked around and this is the best. So what are, can I ask what the terms are for this?
Five-year term for $400. $497,113. I'd shoot that around five years, six percent interest with a 1% loan or a resonating fee.
Thank you.
So I'd like to take a moment to brag on Kiri. So the initial rate that was presented to us was around eight percent. And Kiri checked around with the interest that wanting to do business with the local bank. And I, it's, I mean, it says right here, First Northern. So First Northern, thank you. They gave us a much better rate. And that's, that's really going to help us. I thought that was great work.
Also on that. First Northern does not, did not, if we paid it off earlier to the other company using their financing, it was going to be a 4% charge after that.
And there's no penalty for?
There are no penalties, I understand.
Very good terms.
That 4% for whatever reason, we could pay it off earlier. It was, they were running it for the 4% of outstanding money they were going to pay.
And that's why I asked this really about terms because that's.
Yes, you all did great job.
I'll get these signed.
I think we need a motion.
Motion.
Oh, yeah. We need a, we need a motion to, to approve that law, right?
Right.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the loan through First Northern Bank for the terms that Randy described for the medication package.
Do you have the terms?
Five years, six percent.
Six.
Six percent with 12% or is that?
And no, no penalty if we do this. I second that.
All right, so all those in favor, or we, yeah, we had our discussion. Yeah, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same?
Are they still planning on having that in about nine days?
Okay, on to the finance committee report.
So Madam Chair, I apologize for the length of the finance committee report, but the finance committee has been quite busy during their first month. A few highlights, I, I call them bright spots in my written report. Bright spot number one, the finance committee evaluated the loan options for the medication package as we just discussed. And kudos to Joy and her team for all the work they did on getting that, the contract. In addition to the finance terms that we've already talked about that were better than the ones presented by the manufacturer, Joy and I were able to work together. Joy and I were able to work together and present a option to the medication packager company that resulted in a significant discount for paying cash and obtaining the financing on our own. So we really got the best of both worlds. We got a discount on the machine and we got great financing and we were able to keep the packaging, I think, keep the financing local. So it was really a win-win for the hospital and the community and I'm pretty proud of all the work that, that we did on that. Minutes from the first finance committee meeting on 5/28, those will be in the SharePoint if you wanted to read all the highlights from that. As we discussed a bit before, we've been having budget workshops and there are so many great insights that we're hearing from all the staff. One thing that has stood out to me is everyone has been so positive about the process and about the workshops and about having a chance to contribute to their, talk about their budget and look at the different numbers. Many people who've been here for a while, like Carmen, brought old budgets, worksheets that they had had from past years and they said, we really love to get back to this. So it was, they were great discussions and I learned a lot and I, the finance committee, the discussions were great. And I thank all of the staff because it was really a great thing. And what we would like to do with the finance committee and the budget workshops, we'd like to keep those going. So as we get to the point where we have actual financials every month, we're going to get reports out to all of you in your different departments and we appreciate the great dialogue and we hope it keeps going. So. We are, as I stated before, Nathan and I are working on some minutes of those meetings so you guys can share it and everything that we learned. We did discover, I'm glad to see Kim. We did discover several issues that we wanted to speak with Kim about from a compliance slash risk standpoint and make sure that we're totally in compliance and that we mitigated all the risks to the facility in the best way that we can. So we love your help on that. So bright spot number two, Nathan did a thorough review of the credit card bills and accounts table reports that we were given this month. And he identified several opportunities for improved efficiency, one being the electric bill. If you'd like to highlight that a little bit.
So I'll, I'll try to speak at a high level. So I discovered that we had overpaid our electricity bill by $28,000 in the last two months. And so I want to commend Black Hills Energy to the customer service department. It was excellent and professional and courteous. And after some discussion, they agreed that we had made an overpayment. And so that will come back to us. We also discovered as part of our discussions with the various groups that we have received disconnect notices for both our electricity on a few occasions and natural gates, which of course would be hugely disruptive to our operations. So my recommendation, and I don't know if we'll deal with it tonight, is since those are so sensitive and essential for what we're doing, is we can simply add those two bills to a auto pay schedule to avoid any sorts of difficulties like that in the future. And, and the cause of that was, was essentially open mail. And so.
So we still, when we discussed it with Nathan's department, we still identified that there's a need for all of you to see your different bills and there to be approvals and, and that part. But we feel like there's a way that we can streamline that process to still, you know, maintain our oversight, but get our bills paid more efficiently. So we'll talk about that a little more. Nathan and I also attended the Wyoming Hospital Association Critical Access Hospital Benchmarking. And if anybody wants to see the slides, we got them. But that was very interesting. We've also had several discussions with Durbin about having some board training in regards to those financial indicators and stuff, just to give the whole board a, a better understanding. It can be pretty complex, but there's a lot of stuff that we really should be looking at from a financial oversight, which is part of our, our role. Utilization reports, we didn't get any this month, so we don't really have much to report on that. We're hoping that we'll have that rectified by next session, which brings us to bright spot number two, which is Keisha.
Yeah, we have two, we have two choose.
Okay, three. Bright spot number three is Keisha, because she provided us with the only utilization statistics for this month and we are so grateful. She was able to look back at radiology tests done over about a year. And this is really awesome for us to get a handle on, on what goes on in radiology and we're, we're grateful. So thank you for doing that.
To keep that calm down.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
And this is really awesome for us to get a handle on, on what goes on in radiology and we're, we're grateful. So thank you for doing that.
To keep that calm down.
Yeah, we're, so what Nathan's talking about is one, one of the things that we talked about with Keisha and her department is to take a deep dive into some of these and we'll be doing that on an ongoing basis. And once we have more information, we have some, some ideas right now, but once we get more information and are able to put that into a concrete plan or have some conclusions, we'll bring that forward. So we weren't able to get any information about charges, payments, and adjustments this month with Sandy. She is working on a provider clinic visit report as well. But the one that we were provided, I did make copies for all of you because it had some flaws and it was missing some providers. So I didn't want to put it out to you if it wasn't correct. So we're going to work on that for next month too. In finance committee, Dr. Reimer was able to provide us with some historical clinic data, so that was really helpful too. So we're starting to get a handle on utilization and, and what we can do over at the clinic. So a lot of information gathering and again, it's an ongoing, we'll keep reporting. In terms of accounts receivable, days outstanding is down to 51.6, which is a decrease of 4.2 days from last month. So I said, great job to the billing department. That's a significant accomplishment. So they're really doing well on, on dropping their accounts receivable. In accounts payable, Jennifer Stolten resigned. We have a new AP payroll coordinator. Her name is Alicia. And she shadowed Jennifer before Jennifer left. And she did the first payroll, which you guys have a paycheck tomorrow of being the big ten. She would, before Jennifer left, Nathan worked with her to this cash flow analysis thing.
So I, I worked with Jennifer to make it a little bit more complete, to show the total change in our cash position for months. We left out a few of our accounts. And so I've never dug into the numbers to verify the totals myself. So this is Jennifer's work product. But I think we'll have a better work document and hopefully Alicia can.
And we do not have an actual bank balances, but we'll try and get that for you next month as well.
My goal for that is to get any bank balance, any bank balance, and then show these activities essentially. And so we can prove.
I think it, we're working on ways that we can give the board a better financial picture of where we really stand. So. Ann and I are going to begin weekly phone calls with Durbin and we're working on a plan to get the financials on track. So you can see that. We've been working on that. We'll report back next month with a little more information. The primary goal of the finance committee at this point is to get us a working financial system so that we can all know what's happening on a monthly basis and yearly and we won't have. I want to say big budgets because that really is kind of hard.
We will have more accuracy.
Thank you for that. And then last but not least, Ted and Keisha are working on grant opportunities. Wyoming Treasurer Kurt Myers had reached out to me and told me that there may be some opportunities. We've talked about that and Keisha and Ted have been trying to find contacts. Kurt called me last night and I said, Kurt, have your ears been ringing? Because I've been talking about you. And I actually have a name and a number to get you guys. So. All right, so yeah, awesome. Good stuff going on in finance.
So can I ask the question, do you have any estimate of when we will kind of have our financials back?
Well. I, I, we do get an audit every year. And so an audit gives positive assurance that there's no material misstatements in our financial numbers in aggregate, total levels. So I, I probably would start off by saying that, that I think those numbers are good and over support on our cost report are based on the audit. And so those numbers are good. What we're really struggling with is once you take aggregate information and slice it and dice it and the pieces from all the different departments, it's easy for jurors to creep into that slicing and dicing process. And so that is where our, our interest is focused. Because we realize the need, every department needs to have an accurate question up to you. Sam?
That does help, yeah.
Yeah, and as a rule, you always want to go back to these three years of your coffee report from your financial institution. For somebody else, you did, somebody that did the other two coffee reports. Because sometimes they miss a lot items on the coffee report and can resolve it about 1.5 million dollars just to qualify back to the organization. So I, but they mess with this and uphold it and afford them back these three years to check the previous costs.
So do we have anyone who's interested presently to perform that function?
We can, you know, I had a couple of my financial people that were in the new, in the new coffee report and I had that go back just one year. They got a $648,000 for the good for us that we received this year.
Doing our coffee report.
So I've got a proposal out there, one I've got for quickly to do it. So reach out to BKB as well. But they always must like to do your coffee report rather than your auditor or your financial.
So basically, BKB is the.
BKB, they're nationals.
So I just want everybody to know that I'm on the trail of the double billing problems. I got double billed. And so I collected all my documentation and I visited with Sandy and it looks like our system works just fine. And it looks like what happens is the company that actually prints the bills and puts them in the letters, that's not us. We don't do that here. And so they extract information from our system. And it looks like what happens is they pull everybody's billing information out during the business day. And so what happened, what it seems like happened would be is I made my payment about noon and I still got the bill. And so presumably they had extracted my account information before noon and my payment wasn't reflected, which ended up with a double bill. And so I'm working with Sandy to make contact with that company and just find out if they have any policies in place as to at what point in the day they extract that. And the goal is, is to have them extract it well after the close of business each day so we can prevent that as a source of frustration and negative patient experience. So if, if we get to the bottom of that, I think we can.
Okay.
The other thing we talked about and were going to look into was obligated funds. Every department seems to have either something we bought on loan or it may be as simple as a coffee or lease or a hardware or software lease that we're paying. That we don't have any idea that we look at, oh, we got a million dollars to pay. We got $500,000 of that already obligated as payments need to go to X, Y, Z. And then the budget process, you've got to have an idea of what you're, or real post, should have an exact idea of what you're. Whether they're through a loan or through a, an agreement with somebody to have that in that budget cycle.
I, I love your idea. Should have that scheduled. The best way to get started is to work with Keisha. And as she pays the bills and writes the checks, as those bills come through, we can just flag those and add those to our schedule.
Yes.
And each month we can have a more and more accurate schedule because some things come through quarterly, semi-annually. If we just start that schedule, probably in a year we'll have a very.
Very good idea. And it'll make it easier to look and say, okay, that agreement was over in 2022, but we made payments on it just last year. You know.
I love this idea. So this is a good idea.
Are we doing?
Do you have any, anything else from finance, more discussion, questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And thanks for a great report because I mean, it's great to have it written in front of us still. But we will not take it very much smart. Okay.
Can I tell you first? So for management, we've got Reshma, oh, Callis, I believe, that's her last name. She was with General Medicine. And then asked to talk to her.
Well, down there and just now look at them again.
These guys, we were in quality, so we've seen them.
Yeah, we've seen them.
Yep.
And so can.
Yes.
So can you please just describe the process? Like I can't, you can't just look at all this and in this sort of what, what to look at, what to consider, what factors influence?
So what I would recommend you look at, they have like a quick view. So you can look at the spreadsheet, kind of a quick view or the spiral view. It's just like kind of the down the journey of what's in here.
And so did we do something different?
Yes, so we use a outside third-party vendor. They do all the verifications. And then once they've done all the verifications, they do the sweep. I relook it over, make sure that it goes to the level you want. And then I bring it to the command staff. They have looked through it. They have.
So we're just.
We're just, yeah, three parts, three parts.
It's been looked at by several.
It goes to command staff first and all those providers, they look at it.
What's the term?
And that's standard for every provider, correct?
Yes.
I might add, the process in the med staff, she does a lot of work along with experts that she uses outside building, single national practitioner database that keep track of all of us that can get in trouble crimes or trouble with the law. And so, and different states all put their information in that. She splits this information from national practitioner and national practitioner database and others, put several other things.
We do Sam, Sam Duck, O I G, prefer to be essential to us, so.
She looks at a whole bunch of things now. She brings that same information to your medical staff, and medical staff that makes a decision, make recommendation to you that you, the grant really.
I read it.
Excuse me, if there was any sort of glaring concern, then really the medical staff should be the one to edge that. And then that was bringing some to you.
So we're relying on the medical staff's professional opinion along with the credentialing organization.
The company, yeah.
The other thing she collects is all their current licensure and insurance and all that.
Right, and so I recognize Asher Duppert.
Dr. Gil Calas, I believe. She's with Blue's Neurology, so she's part of that telestroke that we utilize within the E R. So she's got consulting privileges because we have to call them a safe space at a stroke, and she may be one of the doctors that we.
Sure. She will be on site. She would be.
So there will be a lot of the physicians that are not on site, like your pathologists, your radiologists, the V R X rays that we send to rapid by electronically. Oh, really, the biggest bulk of the, we named, don't break my.
So I've got a question, if you don't mind, Dr. Mike. How, in as much detail as you think is appropriate, how can you evaluate? I mean, I understand Ashley Duppert's here, and you know her, and have a sense of her professional reputation. How can you evaluate the off-site neurologist?
I would, I would say, I'll let her comment too, but my comment is also it's on their credential, climbing medical center or Miami Delta Rapid City or wherever. They, they are not only getting our level, where they are making look over at their home institutions.
But you're looking at it through your empty glasses and just saying, this all checks out, makes sense.
Correct.
So there's a tab on there that's called affiliation verification. So all of the other facilities that they're credential at, I get a lot of them myself, that asks questions, is their clinical judgment good? And just ask everything about their practice. And so if somebody has something that's maybe a little sketchy on that affiliation, that's where I would bring that forward to med staff. If they, they had a affiliation, a couple of questions that were maybe questionable, take a look at it yourself, but I'm not going to.
There are times we have gone ahead and proved, and they don't come. Typically, I would say you don't have to have questions.
Yes, well, no, thank you. I just wanted to spend a little time.
Yeah, it's good to know.
Because this, it's very important for patient health that we're really making sure before we give someone the privilege to do diligence, but it looks like a great thorough work.
It's very helpful for the new ones here to, for us to just understand the process. So thank you for all the information.
So you will have to make a motion to go through those. I don't know if you want to keep taking a look at it.
Somebody on.
I'll move to approve the med staff credential.
Good second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
It's just like. Then speaking of med staff, we'll just move into med staff. I'm just gonna just hear me better. There's a pretty quick med staff this last month. We did election of new officers. Med staff voted to just leave them the same, so we've still got Chanters our president, Serbaya as vice president, and Miss Patrick as secretary. The radiology extra, I want Keesha to touch on that because I think she's on the agenda, so I will bring it for her. Um, let's see here, some Yellowstone education. The providers have to do some Yellowstone education mandatory. They're covered by our Yellowstone practice. Basically, what it is, is documentation, better documentation in the chart, and then also bedside manner. Things that, yeah, high risk, especially bedside manner. I can't remember what they said the statistic was this last week, but they said that a fighter with bedside, with terrible bedside manner is at a significant increase of getting sued over somebody that's got great bedside manner when a catastrophic event happens. So just making sure that we got our providers. And then especially the documentation, if you have to go to a suit, making sure that all your eyes are on it and your teeth are on it, making sure that we've got some substantial information to stand on, so. Just aye. There's a home report. At the time, we were at forty-one census. Melissa had two schedule, or two tours scheduled, but they were canceled by the families. And then we found our summer high school students working.
I have a question. I don't know if this is the exact appropriate time, but do we have still a waiting list or people that are?
We do, yes. And Melissa visits it frequently, so every month in our manner Q A meetings, we talk about the waitlist, and Melissa goes through, and she calls probably quarterly the patient or the residents that are on the list to see if they still want to be admitted, if they're ready to come in. And sometimes we take them off because they've moved to the family somewhere else. People share it or something like that, and they're ready for that service. They'll just find that service for them. So we have them off the list, so. And then there is one traveler that wants to sign on full time and on board. She just has to finish up her contract before we can swing her, so.
And that's for the, for the nursing.
C N A, for C N A, yep. And nursing, yep, yep. And then home health, Alison Sarnet for Heather. So get out into your way. Do you have anything to add? And then home health, Alison Sarnet for Heather. So get out into your way. Do you have anything to add? At the time, she said they were getting any new referrals.
Somebody said a keyword at home health. And so, yeah, I think, I think this month, I think so far this month, both admits so far to home health, I think this month. I've got two tomorrow, and I think we've done four so far this week, plus the two tomorrow, so whoever says keyword again, it's aye. Alison Frella, she started as our new, came back to home health, and is now a home health nurse again. Stephanie Martinez is leaving, her last day is tomorrow. So I'm working with Sandy and Lainey. We have one of the villa receptionists at the clinic that would like to come over to home health. So I'm working with Lainey and Sandy, and we're kind of sharing Mindy right now until they can get some staff hired at the clinic. So trying to replace some of, because Alicia left and Mindy left, and so we're just kind of sharing Mindy. And then she'll come to home health and do still some of the billing, I think, for the clinic while she's working at home health. And so hopefully that all works out, I'd be listed.
That's why I never met staffs, so I'm looking at quality with it. Quality was really long, this was five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, twelve, two hour long meeting, so, but I felt like it's a good meeting. So we had twenty-five events in April. Surveys that we sent out, we had just a little over eleven hundred surveys sent out. Fifteen percent of them we need back, so five would be about one percent. The current number of temp staff we have, we have five. We have three C N A and long-term care, one R N and D Qs, and then we do have the A P R N over at the clinic. And then we did just confirm a second one to come to help with the clinic coverage. Should we, I think we have a set date, maybe a sensitive date of seven, one, nine.
Seven, twelve.
Yeah. Dr. Heberly, you know, I think what you guys described, what I should be back on fifteen, and then another, maybe Dr. Fortin's on fifteen. Get a little bit more stability within the clinic with our providers.
So is, is Dr. Heberly's credentialing on track?
Yes. Yes, I am just waiting on the malpractice insurance to come through. That is all I'm waiting on. And I just have to even talk to med staff about maybe just approving this credentialing with that malpractice Mindy. I wouldn't.
You mean, is, is that issue to your malpractice cover?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. Which would be a non-issue. I've seen this loss statement from his previous insurances, but he doesn't have any claims out there. Knowing that he's getting on our malpractice, he's not going to have any claims. So just to get that, to talk to med staff about maybe just approving him next week. Just to get that.
And just so the community to be aware, do you, have you determined which days?
I don't believe we've established the days. I think just the quantity that he's going to do three days a week. Or must we know days? No. We don't know the specific days, just number of days once to do three days a week, so.
I, I recently read the quality committee notes, and I was told that it was customary in the past to report low census days, how many patients were turned away, and these sorts of metrics. I did not see that it was the quality committee notes. Did we drop those out for some reason? And if we did, do we have to?
Place during that days and.
And like the number of days in a month that were low census. And if we have to send somebody home, those sorts of things.
I don't know that I've reported on that, but that might be on your utilization. And you just kind of send me a snapshot of what you were looking at? I can obviously.
They, they, what I'm saying is they were not in the most recent meetings.
Sure.
But someone who worked in that position told me that it's customary in the past to report those important metrics so that the quality committee can understand the important activities from a high level of, of how we're managing that.
I can bring that to a problem. So Kim, that's something that I could report on, the low census part of it, and talking about?
Yeah. That, that would be very useful, I think, just to add at a high level.
Do you want to start, or? We talked about our manner of private star rating. So I think I kind of talked about it a little bit last month, but we're tracking our resident transfers to the E R. And then trying to get the providers to a little more for outpatient ordering like labs or chest x-rays instead of just using R B. Because every time a resident gets sent to the E R, and they don't get admitted, I think it's impact to us that affects our quality rating score. So you have your five stars that you can get. And right now, because we've had a couple of those residents being less on our quality score, we went from three down to one star. So we're trying to get that built back up. So just working with the providers to work out.
You mean, we should have manner of patients go in.
So if the nurse calls and says, they've had a cough, they've got, their oxygen is okay, but they've had a cough and stated the rest of the worse, calling the doctor and saying, you know, newborn and maybe a outpatient chest x-ray on this resident, and it's just.
That's poor quality. No, because the provider should examine the patient, make a decision about what this should be done, so. I would argue with you that, to me, that's something you shouldn't incentivize. Because think about it, if you tell people that, oh, why not get a C N C? Why not get this, get that? Provider can look at that patient, even with nurses concerned, and perhaps say, I don't need that, make a decision.
That was just not specific recommendations.
I understand, I'm just arguing that.
So I like what you said, it is specific.
Not specific, in like our region's overall quality, they give us recommendations for quality. So there are ones, time with C M S quality things, they give us recommendations on what we should do.
Upgrades are nursing, essentially.
And so, Dr. Reimer, can you collaborate a little bit on what you think is the appropriate process for quality?
Well, my opinion is. It's good that the nurses call, they have concerns, family may have concerns, they have concerns. I think it's, unfortunately, what we have, you know, I'm not doing it right now, but, yeah, Dr. Bybee at home, here, Dr. Franklin at home taking a call. And then it's not really, shouldn't be expected of them to come in and lay their eyes on the patient. So in our little situation, if, if a nurse convinces them they're ill enough to be seen by a provider, then I think it makes sense that they go into emergency. So it's good seeing them rather than just ordering tests because you think you might need chest x-ray. When I, I think a lot of times with looking at the patient, if you listen to their chest and it's all clear, you're not going to learn much of the chest. That cough is just one of the last couple days. So all you're doing is running up med care's bills or certified pay, or running up their certified pay patients.
But I ask a hypothetical, what if we had an urgent care in the hospital? Would it be appropriate to take them to urgent? And, and not take them to the emergency?
I, I can tell you that there have been a lot of times when Dr. Franklin was the one in your urgency room saying that I had a nursing home patient, so I could call and say, just put you over there and take a look. So that is kind of an interim thing, you know, you don't have to have the urgent care doctor room most of the time. I would think, where is your hospital's E R person? If they understood that was part of their job description to help out at the manner. If they were questioned by the provider who was called or even directly by the nurse. And then in all those kinds of situations where the nurse does think, oh, my gosh, I have to take me E R, or certainly are those situations. There's no question. And all these others that are minor illnesses, if your hospital's E R person would be instructed to include that in their thoughts and not mind doing it, rather than say, oh, send them over because I'm too important to walk over there and say.
Should we be billing? For the constitution, are we billing?
You, you could, I mean, you, you should and you could. Well, I'm sure, I, I would guess, I'm sure what Chuck did, because he could, I can't remember, but he, he wrote a note, and he probably would tell somebody that you need to code my services.
If we did have an urgent care and we sent manner of patients to the urgent care, would we get things from Mount Pacific Quality if we didn't admit them to the hospital?
Did you say you don't know, or no?
No.
We would not?
Because it would be like, it's an outpatient visit.
I see.
Yeah. Mountain Pacific doesn't really need anybody.
Maybe, who, who?
It means C M S. It's run.
Mountain Pacific is just.
They're just like an oversight.
Okay.
It's then it's right, the decisions. So they just wrote it like, this is what they look for. This is your, what you should do, kind of, yeah.
Okay, so how are you doing, Kim, right about?
I'm about there, yeah. And then I just wanted to give you guys just the stuff here. I'll put these in the boardroom, but this is what I got from the Yellowstone conference. So we did want to have a word.
Wow.
So it's because of the project year, it's for twenty twenty-three. So right now, we're doing a twenty twenty-four project. Could also make in March of next year. Wow. It says twenty twenty-three Yellowstone Quality Award presented to Kimberly Sharfar and Westing County Health Services in recognition of your commitment to patient safety.
That's awesome.
This one is in recognition of clients with patient thinking practices, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kim.
Alright, now I'm done. I'll stop talking.
Okay. Now we're moving on to old place, old business, not old patients.
So radiology construction, sex room is going well. We had our electrician in this week. Um, we had our electrician in this week and he has everything basically, um, set up for the new machine to be put in for the most part. Couple more things need to be done, lighting needs to be, um, put in as well, because we're going to be lighting. But we're moving on track, so, um, Ron told me today that they're going to start painting next week. Um, and then we will start moving on the flooring, so things are going really well. We did get pushed back a week since the last board meeting, um, so delivery will be July sixteenth of the new machine. And then, um, our apps training is going to be the week of July twenty ninth. So during that week, we'll have the clinic extra room shut down and all x-rays will be brought over here because we're going to need all the bodies since we can't really radiate practice people. Um, it's not really appropriate to practice on our peers' radiation, but, so all patients will be brought over to the hospital for x-rays. That's it, just a prison.
Yeah, thanks, Chuck.
So we have.
Yeah, we don't, I don't know why I'm on the.
Okay.
Do you want to hear it again?
Okay, um, President Communication, we're. I want to, for one, I just want Randy to give you a quick thank you for what you've done, for your work.
Well, I think it's the whole order question.
So thank you for your.
Thank you.
Um, and then the other thing that, um, I want to talk about just a little bit and Carrie, Carrie touched on it, but, um, one of the things Carrie and I and Randy as well had a meeting with Tommy Durbin and he, he encouraged us to do, uh, just a finance board training. And so, um, I'm hoping that we can do that, um, in September. So, um, just, it'll be five, five o'clock and we'll do a, a training on finances, just on, on that, so. So that's a, just an update, um. And, and I, I'm just going to move straight into the search committee. We, we've been meeting, uh, it's myself, Carrie, Nathan and Keisha. We're still hoping for one more person from the, from the hospital, we've never got that settled yet. Um, so I feel like it's been going pretty good. We, we talked to Kathy, we, Kathy Harshberger about being a C E O, an interim C E O. Um, and we've done, checked on her references. And then the, I'll, I'll let Nate talk some more, he can say it nicer. Um, and then, uh, also, so then our next, our next step will be, that we'll start working on next week is getting, um, figuring out who's going to do our permanent C E O search, so. So add away, and sure, you can add some more.
Okay, so. Just want everybody to know the board has been here early and late, multiple days, uh, doing our best to improve our process, how we select executive level talent, and I don't think we're done. And so what we're working on next week specifically is we're looking for our, our best idea for how we can improve our search for our next permanent C E O. And then at some point we'll implement that and we'll learn from that and we'll probably continue improving it. Um, the average tenure for a C E O is three to five years for just a number of reasons. That's just where it is. So this won't be a one and done for us. And so my goal is to try to have the best process for how we can make sure thoroughly check backgrounds and get the best candidates in front of us to choose from. And it will just be something we on, ongoingly will improve. Um, we spent, I think I spent five or six hours on the phone talking with Kathy's references and I bet probably all. So we, I think we probably spent eighteen to twenty hours. Really getting to know who Kathy is and, and other people's experiences with her. And we believe that we've got, uh, a very consistent report from, from everybody that we spoke to. I probably shouldn't say more about Kathy specifically, but I just want everybody to know we really put a bunch of time into this.
Okay. So private. So, so our plan is for you guys, I think what we'll do is executive session is next on the list, so we'll.
We have a doorbell, wow.
You didn't know that?
So, so what we'll do is, is we, we will move here in just a minute or two, we'll move, go into executive session. I'm going to suggest, I think there's food over there. I'm going to suggest that, that we as a board will grab some food, we'll go upstairs, do our executive session upstairs and then you guys can grab some food. And so, because we are going to, if you want to stay for the, uh, for the new business, then you can, uh, and then. We'll be back down for that, so Sarah.
I'll make a motion to move to executive session.
All right, we'll second. All with a favor, say aye.
Aye.
I didn't call you today. Get into my house. Nice people.
I'm like, what did I just say?
So you're, you're allowed to call.
When governments pay us to get the word out, governments pay us, but we actually work for the public. And so it's a tough spot we're in because we have to piss off our own clients, basically. The people who sign the checks, we get in fights with because we're fighting for the public and I don't know, all I can do is say that we just got to keep doing what we do and hope that governments, especially in election year, governments need to trust professionals and we are the professionals in Weston County to get their message out.
Exactly. I don't, I can't think of anybody else that does a better job. We put a lot of time and effort into getting all of the product out there and making sure that we reach people in as many avenues as possible. I don't think people understand how much time and effort that we put into those things. And it's most definitely more time and effort than we get compensated for.